That's the hardest part, just tell them they shoot at home all the time, but during the game, they kind of don't shoot the way they would want to.
I thought we were gonna have the big pieces. The big maps. I thought we were gonna have the big maps.
You're not looking at the map though. I mean, at the diagram, you're just looking at what's on here.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Are you looking at diagram?
Have you got it on the computer?
Of what?
Well, I made this one.
It's on your board. It's called by readers.
You want me to bring that board in here and put it right up front?
I want to.
This is what I do.
I have to sit right here.
I thought we were gonna get big copies.
Well, I'm trying to think where I have a big copy. The paper that we have to print it on has never come in. We've ordered it and printed the papers back.
Last I heard, it had not come in yet. We're still waiting. All I know is that Gary got it done for us.
I know Dogwood makes those copies and also B U B.
How can I turn my pictures?
The Dogwood.
Can you download it, click on it?
Send it to my.
Yeah, because usually if it's a PDF, you should be able to rotate it in PDF. You'll do view, rotate.
I'd like to call order this special call board, uh, school board meeting on November twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Present.
Mrs. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Palmer?
Present.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Present.
Mr. Campbell is absent. Mrs. Garner?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Mr. Ritchie?
Present. May I have a motion that the school board adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell's gone. Uh, Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. I guess we'll turn it over at this point to Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Our purpose tonight is for the school board to be updated on work that has been, we've had conversation with about the update of the plans. And so I would let everyone know that we had a athletic committee meeting this week and we have met with staff at all four secondary schools during the week. Primarily, Dr. Scales and myself have been in a position to be able to meet with those staff and go over the plans to get any concerns, recommendations that they make. The goal is to be able to take these to be considered and then by the meeting on our regular December board meeting, to be able to have an opportunity for you to have seen things and make recommendations that we would take back to the architects. So that at that point, we will be able to give them the okay to move ahead with the general building and begin designing the air, the systems, the electrical, the other types of things that would go into it. I will bring to your attention, before we actually go into the building itself, that as you gave me the permission at the last meeting to begin having conversation with landowners of the land between the road and the property. I have met with them, we agreed on price and we are working with them, with lawyers, to go ahead and begin purchase of that property. So that's a piece that we were able to take care of in the last week. The document that you have before you is actually a conversation or is a list of, from school to school to school, the materials or the questions that various teachers raised as we went and had the conversations with them. I will say that as we made the presentation, they were, the presentations were received very well by the teachers. I know that it was open and one of our board members, Ms. Garner was available and was able to come in. Ms. Garner, I don't know if you have any comments about what she observed, her part view when we had the conversation, but if you want to mention that, it'd be a good time.
Well, I noticed that the teachers had a lot of questions and I complimented Dr. Scales because when they came up with questions, he had the answers for them. He, they made notes, as you can see from here, of some things that still concerned them. And Dr. Scales was basically saying that some things still had not been finalized, that it's still work in progress. But I think they were very well into the program. I think they liked what they saw and it's just a few little questions that nobody can answer right now because you're not into the building itself.
Well, I was happy because there was some misunderstandings from earlier that we were able to lay to rest. Most specifically was the couple of questions. I don't know where this came from, but some of them relayed an understanding from earlier that there was only going to be unisex bathrooms as opposed to male and female bathrooms. And I was able to lay that to rest, that that's not been the case, it won't be the case.
That's what future study by the state federal government.
We might be forced into that later, but sir, if we're not looking at.
But that question also has been in the community too.
Well, especially, and I've heard the transgender, you know, are we gonna have a family style?
There will be family style bathrooms in the arena. As you look through, and we'll sort of go through these for you to look at, but one of the things that did come up was particularly for handicap access in the various restrooms and elevators and things of that nature. Yes, there is an elevator and halls are wide and we are looking for the rooms to be handicap accessible as they go in. We had, in addition to those meetings, there was an athletic committee meeting toward the back of the document. You will see the notes from the athletic committee meeting. We went through and had considerable conversation about field and about turf and about what sports of the, the schools are looking forward to being able to have made, to be made available to. In all of the consideration that we have here, we are cognizant of the fact that there is a budget that we have to work within and space is limited. And so whenever we ask these questions, review these questions, we know that there's gonna be the reality that we won't know until bids, until we put this together, put a note to bid, see how the bids come in and then we may be able, we may be forced to come back and make some changes. We may have to take some things out. But like we do with their regular budget each year, we're going to take to, take through this process, looking for what we feel like we need and then we will make adjustments as we need to afterwards. Or either go back and ask for support in being able to build things that may not be in place. So I think probably at this point, the thing for us to do is to just go through and give you a chance to read through some of the comments that you see from each of the schools. And if you have questions about what they are meaning or what they're asking about, I will be happy to talk with you. Dr. Scales is here, he can also answer questions about what was the question that came up and how we responded to them. We have available all of the slides, the slides that showed the original concept for the fields, for the site plan, the slides that show what, not so much the fields, but what we are needing because of the roadways that would come in, being able to make the adjustments in this area for the roads, for the buses. And then for safety purposes, the safety committee knowing that we needed to bring roads in this way for parking and for access for emergency vehicles to come in close. We have had significant conversations about lanes in this area and how much we will be needing to have multiple lanes to come in for traffic coming in, letting students in and out. And then conversation about when we come into this area, persons will not be able to turn back to the east. They'll have to actually turn west and then maybe U-turn, but there are lanes going into those roads to be able to do that. And then of course, we also have copies or the plans that we can, I will be able to point out as you might have questions that have come up from here, as best we can answer them at this point as well.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, a couple of things. Hallway space, do we know what the dimensions of hallway spaces are?
The width of the halls is sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet. And at one of our schools, we actually had a person, a teacher, pull out a ruler and slide it out sixteen feet so that you could get a sense of how wide that is.
Because my concern.
That's sixteen, that's actually sixteen feet on the corner, it was along the corners of the classroom areas. It'll be wider than the main concourse areas.
This is the main concourse area.
But I guess, I might guess I'm referring to the hallways in between the classrooms.
Right, these halls.
Two toes sixteen feet.
Okay. And then also another question that's been asked, what about the green space that was originally in there for, for some outdoor learning space? It was, is that still on the plans?
You're talking about these areas that are allowed to have lights at each of the classrooms?
Right, but I remember there being some green spaces, courtyard, green spaces. Yes, I guess that's the word I'm looking for.
These are courtyards.
Okay, so those green spaces are still there, available for classes that may want to go outside?
Yes, yes, but they're protected, they're protected spaces. And right now, we're looking at those having concrete as opposed to having grass because if they're grassed in or things of that nature, then you've got to be able to bring long moors in.
Right.
They will have planters so that we can put some things in.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they will be concrete.
And then also another, and Dor might have, Ms. Garner might have heard this from the teachers. Another thing I'm hearing from a lot of the teachers, are they gonna have their own classrooms? I know it's been mentioned that something about pushing buggies in between classrooms with their stuff and different things. That's a question that keeps popping up.
That was a question that came up at each of the schools and I think that question primarily came from the fact that when we first went in August to the teachers, we were looking at a budget of a hundred million. And we were looking at having the schools no larger than eleven hundred at the middle and thirteen hundred at the high. We've been able to get it to more than that. And we were, they were also having that conversation with the teachers based on the issue of what is currently being recommended by the Department of Education for space. And in many places, that's helping to make sure that all classrooms are being used all the time. Our teachers were very vocal in saying they would like to be able to continue to keep them in their area. And as we looked at it with the career programs that we were working with in the six career centers, we've been able to, and we are planning to make the hallways accord, move according to discipline. So you've got your science hallway, your math hallway, your English hallway, your social studies hallway. As teachers teach in those classes during those times, most every bell, most teachers will have their own classroom for all of their teaching and probably for planning. It is possible at times that some other teacher that teaches a one-off subject may need to come into a classroom, but that happens now.
Okay, I mean, just give me an example of what that might would be.
All right, as an example, Ms. Ritchie is teaching English twelve.
Okay.
Okay, and she's gonna be teaching English twelve at least three of the four classroom periods as we have them on block schedule now. Okay, every day, she's got that. So there's no need to move her from room to room as there, the English hallway may be upstairs, the science hall.
We haven't determined which hallways are gonna be.
Other than the science, we now have to know which ones the science hallway will be because the science labs are larger than the regular classrooms. And we're designing those specifically. So if she's gonna be in that area through the day, then she's gonna continue to keep that room. All of them will know where they will go. But then, and probably she'll have it otherwise, but it could be that there is a special classroom that's needed for some particular reason related to the economics class that students have to have. It could be that a group of them that would choose to take that in a classroom during the day rather than taking it through the two-way, through the technology center, might need to go into that classroom if there are some others or if they do. And they just worked out it administratively through the day.
So it wouldn't be a way that we could go ahead and build that? I mean, is that something we were gonna offer with the new school or, I mean, how's that gonna work? I'm just thinking about building the space in now, if we have to come back, that would be an opportunity at that point, I mean, in my opinion, to be able to do it then.
We, we are limited to what budget we have. We can't necessarily go through now and say every class that could be offered. And then make a classroom for every class that could be offered. Follow what I'm saying? And so we're, and we have the limitation of, we can build so many classrooms at such and such a space. And then if we add students later, we know we have room to add classrooms here or here for the need for more classrooms because of more students, but individual classes that may need to be offered. We would, the teachers, the administration will just have to find the space to put there.
Which is what happens now.
Which is what happens now.
Right, that's the key, it's not any different than it is now. They got it in their head that they're gonna be moving around the college teachers and that's not true.
Right. And in addition, there are rooms here, like in between the science, the chemistry lab and the physics lab, there is a space for storage and for teacher prep and on each of the halls for them to get together and do that. If they need to move out of that classroom during the planning period, there is a place for them to be able to do it. And they were, as we explained that to the teachers, they seemed very pleased with that explanation.
I just know that's one of the things that I've heard a lot. Dr. Scales, did you hear something?
I want to just add this one piece. I think one of the biggest things that came out from the summer was the fact when the architects initially spoke to the high school teachers. They were saying it was gonna be a ninth grade wing, a tenth grade wing, eleventh grade wing, a twelfth grade wing. Well, okay, if I'm English teacher that teaches three subjects, I could be all over the building. So that's in their mind, those things that I could be, I teach English nine and first period. I then gotta go across the building to tenth grade another period and I may have to go upstairs and teach my senior English. And that's when the whole ball started to snowball and those guys didn't know how to address it and I wasn't there. But again, that's how they covered it. So in a, again, math teacher would have been the same way. If I teach high school one with ninth graders or tenth graders, but then I've got seniors for trig, I may have to move, moving to the other part of the building. So.
You should not make that switch.
Right, and that's where the confusion came in and what we've been telling all the teachers in our meetings is that new schools are now going with departments. So when you want to go to English, whether it's English nine through twelve, they're all in that one part of the building. Or if you want to go math, all maths are gonna be in this part of the building. So it's not like they've got to move anywhere. And if they did have to move, they can move within their little unit.
To the department.
It'll be departmentalized.
At the high school level, now at middle school level, we're looking more at team.
So sixth grade, seventh grade.
Exactly. And the instructional committee and teachers will be asked to come work with us on some specific planning about how schedules need to work with those individual.
Is this meeting being recorded?
Yes.
All right, so make sure you use your microphone.
Oh, do I need to come up to the microphone?
Well, just so they can hear, because I think people are gonna be interested in hearing the answers to these questions. So if you would, make sure you had a microphone. Go ahead, Spencer.
I've had a lot of comment about the pod system. A lot of the public, they're not teachers, but the public favors the pod system by grade because of discipline. You're not mixing all ages in a school and that's the way, that used to be the design. That was a popular way to go. Now all of a sudden, it's a different way to go. I mean, I don't know, what do you tell the public? If you got to say this is a new thing, they go, well, the other one's working, so why would we switch?
It's currently that way now in our current buildings and most buildings, most schools that are around. The students can, students can be all over the place, just like with high school scheduling. Because a lot of times when we do some high school scheduling, students can be intermixed all over the place. Really, other than English, a lot of times beyond that, you can have all kinds of grades mixed in together in math classes, history classes, science classes, just on scheduling. Then when you start doing some of the electives, there's really an opportunity where you'll have, could have nine through twelve in it. So it's really, it's really the way schools are running right now. I mean, our high schools right now are running that way. So it's nothing like it's brand new, but in the, it's hard, it's very hard to sit and just strictly go to ninth grade because you may have some kids needing, they're tenth graders in a ninth grade class. Or you've got some kids that are, for example, that are, that may want world history, that may have skipped to their tenth grade year will come back as juniors to come and get it and may need to take, you know, world history two and US history. So they're, they're, intermingling is happening all the time now. So it's really, to be honest, it's already here. Other than, like, other than English, really, the English is the only one that's really per grade other than those that may not have passed the P this year.
Another part of that that we keep our minds on is that we are looking at really working with the career center concept and having students building those long-term plans as they come into the high school and working through those expectations. That will have some impact on it. The other thing we need to keep in mind is for future use, we always try to build this so that it's flexible for future needs. And other than the science classes, which are larger, most of the other classrooms are much the same size. So it can be changed. Teachers can be moved from one area to another as future administration, future issues need to be taken care of. They're not, they're not stuck in something for the next twenty-five years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In addressing this situation, having been there, done that, the only class really that is almost needed to teach students in a certain area would be the lowest grade in your building. If it's in middle school, then it would be, what, sixth grade, seventh grade? And that's because they're coming from the elementary where in that they have been in a line going here, going there, whatever. To come into the middle school and then just go wild or wherever you want, it's quite difficult. Now, from the upper grades of the middle school and your high school, there is no problem with them changing around. Yes, they will be. There are certain students that's gonna be maybe in the class, a tenth grader with a twelfth grader. If he or she desired that class, that's where they would be and if they are able to survive there, then that's where they need to be. So the only class that I, as an individual, will say that we need to strongly look at maybe being off to themselves is the lowest grade. And when you get to high school, as you know, ninth graders are the ones that go through the training stage of trying to decide what to do at a high school level. But knowing ninth graders after they stay there for a while, they will merge in and become part of the group. But that lowest grade in the middle school coming from the elementary is quite difficult. You almost need to keep them a little bit under control.
That's very true and a lot of times with ninth graders too, they're limited with the type of class they can take anyhow. All of them, one of their elective classes, which they're taking all class, taking it with all grades, you know, in the shop class. So it's a chance, there are opportunities where there'll be all in, making with anybody within the grade line in school.
One other question too, I have to ask, what is the average classroom size square foot right now as we have it? Do we know any projections?
Well, that's the one I gotta check on, that was a question that kept coming up. I've gotta, we're meeting with them Monday, so the most of, most.
Who's meeting?
We're meeting with the architects on Monday, talking to the star workers on the design of the science classroom. We've actually bringing in the science, some of the science teachers and administrators on the buildings on Monday.
The architects will.
Architects are coming in.
Start having conversations about what the nursing center will look like, what the science classes will look like.
Do we, do we know, maybe some, some of the board members have been here longer, do we know what an average classroom size is square foot right now in our buildings at middle high school, give or take? Square foot.
That's what we're sitting, we're talking about right now.
Four or five hundred? Nine hundred? Eight hundred?
Nine hundred square feet.
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred square feet, a classroom?
And we're, and we've, they've built them seven hundred in the school, so. So they're still large.
Really?
Some of them, some of them.
The last faces are larger than that.
Yeah.
We know that we've been planning at twenty-four students per classroom.
How many, twenty-four? All right.
And again, as you look through some of this, particularly with band and whatnot, you're gonna see some comparisons to what they currently have. Of course, the band is moved from a band room to an old C P E classroom, which is huge and they're concerned about the space.
Right, and another question that I've heard a lot about, our graduating class, when we enter the new school. Right now, I believe each family sees seven tickets for graduation, is that correct?
Depending upon the number of students that are at that, that will graduate. But on estimation, it's about six or seven.
So I would say with the combined high schools, we'll probably have, what, three fifty, three seventy-five graduating in one class?
This year's graduating class will be three hundred and ten.
That, that came on, Mr. Honeycutt, during the athletic committee.
Oh, okay.
Where are the people gonna go? They bounced around the idea of the size of that gym can be the primary space if you put the seats out. And I think it's over two thousand people.
With the, in the gym, with the bleachers pulled out on either side, you've got two thousand people here plus what you could be able to put seats in, which is larger than what we have now.
So not, not counting, not counting all the foreign?
Not counting the auditorium. You could come back. Some of the teachers who are specifically concerned about handicap issues have mentioned to us they would prefer, because we've got access to the stage without having to go up or down steps, that we would have graduation ceremonies when we have students of that need here. Where you'd be able to, twelve hundred seat auditorium, you'd be able to have the students, you'd have the faculty and two tickets, we think, if not three, per, and then have it such that it can be simulcast into the gym for anybody else to be able to watch the whole thing. You can do it the other way, you can do it here and sound them cast into here. But they were concerned about how those students in wheelchairs would come across. That's correct because the fire marshal will not allow you to have a certain amount. There is a number in the front of your gym when you walk in, the hall auditorium, that will dictate as to how many they can come in and shut you down. We would be in a position as well, if, you know, depending on how we need, to put in chairs here in either of the cafeteria areas and be able to. That's the answer. There was a lot of concern about safety and of course, they were very pleased that when anybody's coming in this way, you've got doors that we can have. There were questions about the use of metal detectors. The doors here can have metal detectors or we can use the wands. We've told them that, there was a recommendation by safety people that we'd have wands rather than metal detectors in the doors because that way you can use them anywhere. But that's got to be determined as we've worked through. But we also have a second set of doors so that no one coming in here will be able to get through to the main area without being buzzed in. And then of course, we can actually shut off this whole area from any activities that are going on in any of these areas as would be needed for it. We also expect to use a key, the card system, and as we understand the card systems now, every classroom can be entered by card and you can actually designate for each student which classrooms they can go in, what their keys are tabbed to be, what their cards are tabbed to be. So that's helpful with camera.
So that's helpful with cameras everywhere.
Miss Bailey, I think you have another question.
I was just looking over the list, does the band directors may, has there been any address of this issue?
Well, again, when you get down to the actual use of a classroom by the individual teachers and what they need, that's a conversation that we're not, we've not yet begun to have a competing call. I mean, again, Monday, as was mentioned, the architects are coming down to meet with science teachers, and I think with nurses about the nursing areas and just what the science labs would need to look like. And we'll begin doing that more and more with each of them as they go through what they need. However, one conversation that we had at each of the schools, and we've gotten an answer, pretty unanimous answer from the teachers on, is the idea of the windows. The architects have been pretty insistent that the windows go from floor to ceiling so that much light can come in and they seem more open. We were of the opinion that if you do that, they're just gonna put, pull the shades down and not use it, and it would be better to have windows basically from waist going up, or regular windows, as opposed to from floor to ceiling. And it's been, actually, I didn't hear any teachers say that they wanted the floor to ceilings, they'd rather have the windows that were small.
Have a bunch of windows all the way down, allowing people to escape more than we're able to use how it happens.
You mean on the exterior of the building?
Well, every, because of these...
End of that quarter.
And, well, and outside, every classroom, not in these areas, but every classroom actually has windows from, to the outside for natural light. And what we're talking, what they were saying is they wanted those windows to not be from, all from floor to ceiling.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
We'll go back to the band concerns. I think one of their main concerns too was storage. And that's, I mean, that's not really anything that's programmable. You've gotta have storage for these instruments, so we've gotta make sure that that storage is there. And it could be storage that is shared with the auditorium. I don't know, it looks like to me it backs up to it, so...
Well, we've worked specifically to pull in, you remember, one of their earliest conversations was that great big open area that they had with nothing in it, and we insisted we need to have this for many things. And that was giving us the option of bringing the band room and others into this area closer to the auditorium so they have more direct access. And that, we think, is gonna give us the option for much more.
And I would assume, getting back, Ms. Bailey, to the storage part, because I know the college with their new building had a big problem with that, because they were allowing storage behind those back set of curtains. The hospital uses that event for a lot of different things, the cornerstone foundation, all they have their vents there. And it's no room, I mean, it's cluttered up back there, and, you know, I think Mr. McDill, when I spoke with him, was concerned that there would not, or whatever's proposed right now was not adequate storage for what they needed.
And then, you've got color guard stuff, yeah, that's not, I mean, they use that outside, but so they gotta have somewhere to put all that stuff. And it works well now, because they're in that huge space that used to be, you know, CTE space, it's basically a garage. And they've got all their uniforms that are on the rollers, I mean, it's a lot of stuff.
We're finding space is an issue. And when we had the Athletic Committee, one of the things that came out very specifically is they were looking in this area is, this is the weight room, this is the area for wrestling. The weight room is not nearly large enough with what we need right now. So we're gonna have to go back in and take a considerable look at this area and how to best use that for what we need for that weight training, athletic training, and for the wrestling and other sports that we're coming in with.
I mean, just as you, a couple things real quick, the courtyards are not just outdoor learning environments. They're probably there for lighting purposes in the classroom, just as much, right?
And, but secure, not, with no access for somebody to be able to get in there and out.
Right, and the, how will the traffic flow from buses into the building? Because if they come out of the buses, makes, I'm calling middle school, right?
Buses...
All of our buses currently are middle and high school students together. Right. Elementary are separate, but we're only running two, so they're, middle and high school are together.
Buses will be coming in from this area, and we'll be letting off for students at the high school to come in here, and the students at the middle school to come in here with the SROs watching.
So they don't drop them off in one place, they drop them off in two different places?
They're letting, right. Or either, there's also the option that we talked about of having the bus area over here, and they just come in and park, and then the students at the appropriate time get off of the buses and come and march into the area that they need to.
That's more controlled.
That's more controlled.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, that's why, if I go back, that's why we've got this whole area right here for the buses to be able to park during the day and be able to come in and out.
That's more like what we're doing at the elementary schools right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
But there is a, we're looking at this, this part right here is actually covered so that students coming in will have an area of whether it's bad to be able to get to the school or if they're getting too wet.
I'm sorry, and have we got, can we go back to the field where we can see the fields?
Well, we've got two displays for the field.
Okay, yeah, there you go, okay.
But what we had considerable conversation in the Athletic Committee is, we do feel the need for two fields, at least, and a track at the middle school, although not the same, not a competition track. We're learning that competition track requires a certain type of covering, not just asphalt. But for what we would want for practice or whatnot, we would have the option to just put, to put an asphalt track around this area. Of course, these are now closer to the high school. We did not feel we needed the tennis courts for the middle school, we've got adequate area here. And then we are hoping still to be able to raise money to be able to put the turf field in for multiple things, but keep these for all types of practices. And, of course, members of our Athletic Committee were there. Mr. Turpin, do you wanna address any other things that came up from the committee?
They also brought up storage, storage being an issue, storage being lawnmowers, tractors that we currently have. They asked, where is that gonna be kept at? So we talked about, hopefully, we can have a storage space in conjunction with the barn on that site, so you can use it for multiple purposes.
Is, I don't see, is the barn on there now?
It's on the other one.
It's right there.
Is where?
Right there.
Oh, okay.
And the barn is, as we've had the safety committees, the barn is also being looked at from the safety perspective as a staging area for any emergency services that we may have.
Like a command center?
Command center, exactly. Because they want that to be exit, separate from the main building. So they would be able to come in, come immediately down. That would require a little bit more of a road right here to get down to that barn.
Okay, what's that word in the middle saying?
Middle, is that the middle school? That just says Mackenberg School. Middle and high school.
All right, well, okay, well, all right, is, is that the football field?
No, this is the football field, this is the building right here.
Okay, so we're not having a football field on the middle school side?
We, we had, in between this rendering and this rendering, it was not necessarily drawn in. But what we know we would do is want to probably add those back, and the main time that that's needed is as we're grading the area, this would be all graded at the same level so that all those fields can be put in.
So, I mean, when we submit these, the RFPs...
When we submit these, we would be looking for those fields to be put in.
So they will be in place?
That's our goal. Now, again, when we come back with prices, we might need to look at, is something we have to do now, or can we add them later? The good news about grass fields is they can be added later if the, if it's graded appropriately.
Mr. Nichols, can you click back on the first one? And you see the football field, that track that goes around it? And then you had the other one? Yes.
Okay.
And then you have the other two fields down, to the left there. What was talked about, they were removed in the second drawing. But by going in, leveling the soil out, the Athletic Director says, as long as it's level, we can get grass there, and that'll be adequate. There's not a lot of cost in just having a grass field. So they're gonna actually come back.
Says we practice.
Practice, yes.
So that won't be an actual, Mr. Turpin, that won't be an actual, on the middle school side, that they would actually play games on?
No, they want to have that track and football field there, which can be used for soccer as well. The main competition field, the hope is to allow the middle school kids to use the high school. But in the event they do need that field for soccer or other sports, it still can be used. It's just a grass field. They're talking about having a possible artificial turf at the high school. So it still could be used for soccer or some of the other sports we have at the middle school as well.
Mr. Turpin, there's, what is that, eight tennis courts?
Now, the tennis courts came up. When you look at the other fields also, it's the recommendation of Athletic Committee to have all the fields with lights, so they can be used day or nighttime. The tennis courts is there, but the question will be, the Athletic Committee is asking, what is the cost of the tennis courts? Because if the cost of the tennis courts, because we have issues with auxiliary gyms, they much rather have an auxiliary gym than tennis courts, because the auxiliary gym can be used for instructions as well. Also, looking at, we're waiting on whatever the price, we don't know the real prices yet. The Athletic Committee did also bring up swimming pool. What is the cost of a swimming pool, not a ten million dollar pool, but a practice pool? Just to have an actual cost given from the architect. But the tennis courts are still there, but if it comes down to when we get a budget back, the priority is gonna be the auxiliary gym.
Do you think there's that kind of demand?
The auxiliary gym is there still, we're not pulling it out.
Right.
Do you think there's that kind of demand for tennis? For eight tennis courts?
We're looking at expanding, we're looking at ideas of having other sports.
Right.
Contended upon the budget, if the budget allows. There are other teams that compete in tennis, it's not a high demand. But if you, if you, the question was, what's the higher priority, tennis or swimming, it'd probably be swimming. But we don't have the cost of what it would actually be at.
You know, I have a question.
Go ahead.
We want all these things. I mean, I know we do, I mean, we want everything we can get for our kids. Why don't we bid this basic package? And then bid the option as addendums? And then you've got values set with each, each section, and you can add and subtract, because if you, if you bid the basic package and it comes in, say, a hundred million, you know you've got fourteen million left, because we already know we've got six million of that going towards Sewell Pipe, maybe more. But then you get, then you can start saying, okay, well, the tennis courts are a million, this is a million. And if you bid it that way, the low bidder already has the addendums in place, and now you can place them. Or if it goes a hundred and thirty million with the addendums, you know you can't have them. But you've got something to look at, but we just keep, we've got two or three different plans, but we don't have any idea what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, and that's what we're waiting on, is the cost, and I think it's a good idea, get the items bidded, and then we know, once we submit it.
When we had the Athletic Committee, that was actually what we came to, is let's put everything I did that we know we would like to have, and then when we put it out to bid, if it comes in over, we won't have a priority list to be able to say, we may not be able to have this now, but how can we make sure that we later might be able to add it without too much probably...
But if you bid it the other way, you get your basic package that you know you have to have, and then all your extras are line items in the bid, so you can add them. Trying to back them out is harder than adding them in when you're bidding something. I mean, I do this a lot. It's a lot easier, and it's a lot easier to understand, because then we can say, okay, our basic suit is this. Now, we wanna add that middle school field, and that's a million dollars. Okay, we've got room for that, so let's go, let's make that a priority, let's put that in. Okay, we know we need the barn, and that's gonna be, you know, two or three hundred thousand dollars. That's an addendum item, so now we can add that one in, so that's something that we need more than another tennis court. You can juggle your numbers when you do that, but you can still always go back to your base bid, and you've narrowed it down, because your bidders are gonna be pre-qualified, all of them, and when they bid it, you're gonna get a number, and that's the number, you'll know where you really are.
Mr. Edwards, part of the base bid, I understand that concept, would be to have what is required. And you're right, a tennis court or a swimming pool is not required. But looking at the middle school, as far as those fields, it would be required at that middle school to have that field with a track going around it, because you don't, there's too many kids to have the middle school kids going to the high school. So that has to, that, yeah.
They'll be in your base bid.
That has to be in the base bid.
I mean, if that's the way we wanna do it, that needs to be in the base bid.
And, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's been the biggest concern, and I know middle and high school students, you know, ride the school bus together, but, you know, just from a parent perspective, I've heard a lot of that about the kids co-mingling during the day, you know, is it gonna be separate? You know, they just, that's a fear for them, and, you know, they don't want their sixth grader going with the twelfth grader, or, you know, vice versa, I've just heard a lot of that.
Well, we addressed that issue at each of the meetings of the high schools. This line basically is drawn through the school as a way of showing the demarcation point between the middle school and the high school. Of course, the auditorium is gonna be used, scheduled to be used, so we know that students will be here. The only, and I spoke up with the teachers and said, there can be a couple of situations where a middle school student may be moving over to the high school to be able to take a high school class. And, but the only scenario that I can think of where a high school student would be coming into the middle school is if they're part of a program such as Teach for Tomorrow, and they're observing a middle school class for that particular part. But they won't be going back into the middle school to take classes. So they will be separate. Even, as you can see, cafeterias are separate, the administrative areas are separate, they will be separate, so...
Can you address lockers?
Well, it's still a question. It's still a huge question. Lockers take up significant space. Teachers, particularly at the middle school and four, six grade, are anxious that all kids have lockers. We are having the conversation, we've got some room for lockers at various places. Lockers for athletes and where they would store things is a big concern. At the same time, we know that particularly at the high school, there's a lot of empty lockers that are simply not used, and how do we work with that? So we have place for lockers, but knowing that they're going to take room out of all ways if we put them in there, and how many do we need to use? We've sort of come up with a suggestion, it can be changed, but a suggestion of maybe fifteen percent of the student population as a number of lockers to look to add, put in significantly, and then if we need to add some, we can find places to keep lockers, and ten percent at the high school. But, but the real issue is backpacks for lockers. And we will need some lockers anyway, and there's place for some lockers. As far as backpacks are concerned, we will have much more security at the doors to be able to look at backpacks and what's in them, coming or going. You know, you always have the question of where do they, are they stored? The furniture that we will be looking at to go in, has place for book lockers, room for other things? That's a question that, you know, we don't need to make a determination of how many lockers at this point, because obviously lockers go into all waste space. Yes, ma'am?
I had an opportunity to moderate a presentation at the School Board Association meeting, and it was presented by the Powhatan superintendent, and he talked about what they did. They just recently had some new construction and renovated space for a Powhatan middle school. And they decided to not have lockers. Band students and athletes, when they come in in the morning, they come in the back. If they have an instrument, they take the instrument to the band room, they leave it there. If they have practice or equipment or whatever for athletics, they stop by the gym. If they have athletic lockers there, they put their stuff in there. He said it was, you know, they did that project under budget, and one of the, one of the ways that they were able to spend the amount of money that they spent was because they did not do something like that. No offense. And I'm just sharing that, just to say that. We don't have to do that, I'm just saying that that's... We don't have to do that, I'm just saying that that's what they've decided to do at Powhatan Middle School.
Are they happy with it? Have they been in this middle school for a while now?
They've been in there. And, I mean, I haven't talked to anybody there, I'm just sharing with you their perspective.
That's a decision that is to be made.
I went into a school.
Go ahead, Ms. Paul.
What I was gonna say, I went into the school in Lynchburg, and they had what they called handicap lockers, which were low with like a tabletop on them. And that was only in two sections of the school, there were no lockers anywhere else. And talking to the teachers and some of the students there, they didn't seem to mind not having lockers. I think it's gonna be, you know, individual teachers, and what you get used to, I think that's what it is. Everybody here is used to, here's a locker, use it.
Mr. Paul? Yes, sir. I think we need to go ahead, this is my opinion, if you're wrong. Make some decisions. For example, decide what we're going to do as far as, we have the four by four or singleton. Because if you go with a four by four, you would need less space for lockers or anything of that type. But if you go on with singleton, which means seven period a day, you've got seven books or five at the least to carry around with you, then you may need to have somewhere to drop one of those books off, or two of those books off, or three of those books. But if you have four by four, you only have at the most four books during the course of a day. In most cases, probably three, because if you go to some of your classes, you won't even need a book as long as you have a good new book, et cetera, et cetera. But what we're doing, in my opinion, again, we're tossing around and we're never making any concrete decisions. And some decision has to be made so that others can follow suit. Another comment. When we look at our fields and other parts of the building, lights and whatever, let's remember, we gotta have lights everywhere. For example, if it's a tennis court, you're gonna have to have lights. We don't want to wind up with a court case, especially if we have girls playing in one and the boys on the other, and you don't have lights on the girls, but you have it on the boys, then you're opening yourself up for a court case. So let's keep that in mind. Everything for the boys, you gotta have for the girls. These are things that, that we just need to keep in mind as we make these decisions. And third and last thing is, when you start talking about artificial turf, I talked with a company just the other week when we were down in Williamsburg. Let's not fool ourselves thinking that if we put that artificial turf out there, that we have a cost-free field. Not the case. You're gonna have to pay a lot for having that artificial field out there. So let's not get so caught up on thinking that just because it is a beautiful thing, that we're gonna have a cost, less cost, that is not the case. That's just food for thought of those three comments.
Tommy?
Oh.
And I agree with some of the things Mr. Paul said. The problem we have here with designing the school is, this is one school board designing the school with one superintendent. And today, under four by four block, we may have that. Ten years from now, we may have a totally different teaching method, and we may be back to seven. So we've gotta plan this thing as close as we can for fifty years and not just say, well, today we're gonna be four by four, and we're not gonna do anything else, because five or six years from now, we get a different superintendent. Hopefully, it'll be ten more years, but we get a different superintendent, a different school board, and they don't like that anymore. They're gonna go to seven periods, and now you can go, now we really got a mess. But anyway, that was just one comment. As far as, as far as the athletic fields, we know nothing about them. And if you ask the guy that sells the field, he's gonna tell you how good it is. If you sell, tell the guy that sells the grass, he's gonna tell you how bad it is. I would suggest that, and I have, I've talked to somebody, he was the athletic director in charge of facilities at the Naval Academy, that has volunteered to come here and discuss athletic turf with us and tell us the types, and how much it costs to replace it, and what you have to do to maintain it. He did it for seventeen years, and I think Mr. Turp knows it very well, because all his children go to school there. But he, I mean, he can give us some information and give us the dollar amount of what it takes to maintain it, replace it. And then we've got something to really look at. Or a committee to do that with the Athletic Committee, I don't know if they love turf, I'm not gonna ask that.
We've had that conversation, and I ain't planning to get in touch with them.
And that way, the Athletic Committee could get involved in that and get the real numbers for us. I think that's a great idea.
I might make a comment, a couple of, some of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Paul. We had talked particularly with Mr. Dalton about lights. And you're right, and primarily, I'm very pleased that the new LED lights that are out there with some of the even solar options of running them. You can put lights in much less expensively than we've ever been able to do before. In fact, we're doing that right now in some of our areas. So light, we want everything to be lit. Another comment about the lockers and the books. This building will have accommodations so that every classroom will be able to have the appropriate electrical outlets in the right places for the laptop computers. And that way, we'll be able to move, as you were having the conversation about the numbers of laptops, we'll be able to move to a one-to-one initiative with our students as opposed to our classroom. So that if they come back to school without having charged the battery, they can plug it in and know that they're able to still look forward and use it. So that's a part of the discussion, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Nichols, Powhatan middle school's on the seventh day a day. I'd like to suggest that maybe our middle school principals might get in touch with the middle school principal at Powhatan, just to have that conversation. It wouldn't take that long to call him on the phone and see what, you know, it may be a terrible idea. And they may talk him out of it, but it might be something too, if they can hear the way someone else is implementing it, how they might begin to consider that.
Schools in Region Eight have gone back to seven. I know a four or five, at least, that have gone back. And Mill Lane High School, but I think there's probably proven doubt out there that, you know, you learn better when you do something, oh, yeah, that's why they rush it.
That's why we wanna have the instructional committee work with our teachers and looking at that whole piece. The time of day and all that comes into it. Now, one of the things we've talked about with the middle schools is the sixth, the seventh, and eighth grade don't all have to be on the same schedule. They can meet the needs as they would want to work with them. We do know the sixth graders are working specifically in teams. And the question is whether we want a four-person team for all four subjects or a three-person team, and how we work that out. And that's a conversation to be had as well. But it's not gonna have an impact on how many classrooms we can put in space if we know we have available. So that's not something that we have to decide in December.
One other comment. You know, I just pray that, you know, I'm sitting here representing the families of the students, but also our staff, and again, our administrators, I'll say it again. I just wanna make sure, in my opinion, that our staff, our teachers, our administrators, whoever, have adequate space. Because again, they're the ones that are in these buildings all day, they're the ones working with these kids. The kids need to have adequate space to learn. So again, moving forward, I pray that that is gonna be a big, big focus for our teaching staff, because it is important to them. That's the same reoccurring theme, is making sure that they have enough space.
I noticed on Monday night with the teachers at Parkview. Now, I don't know about Bluestone and Parkview Middle. But the more questions that were answered by Dr. Scales, it looked like they were beginning to buy into it better because they could see more of what was being suggested. It came up with the type of furniture that might be in a classroom or design. Well, Dr. Scales had a scale of desks and sort of, and the more he explained different things, they seemed to be more accepting of how the project, especially when they found out they didn't have to move from classroom to classroom. That was the biggest thing. Another thing that he pointed out, and Dale brought up, was teacher workspace. And Dr. Scales pointed out on the diagram where there was space on each hall where they would have room to work. Special ed teachers were very concerned because some of the files that they had were confidential, and they had to be under locked and key. And some classroom needed to be self-contained, and on the, I can't point it out up there. But I think it was one classroom I know that had a bathroom in the classroom itself for self-contained. And they had a storage area or work area where files could be stored. And I think the more that teachers see and hear from people and listen to them, I think they're becoming more comfortable that they are being listened to.
And I know at Bluestone High School, they have teachers who often have to leave in the afternoon. They have two separate meetings. I'm going back to them again for those who couldn't make it to the afternoon meeting. And we'll do that, and we'll continue to have other meeting meetings for these things as well. But you continue to get that information out. And all of this will be shared with the architects, and we'll be going all of this information with them as we have to.
Mr. Edwards?
I want to have one last comment. I think we've got a great maintenance department. And I think we really need to pay a lot of attention to what Brian Dalton tells us about maintenance and future maintenance, and how this school is really laid out for maintenance. Because that's one of our major expenses in the years to come is maintenance. That's what is killing us at all these schools now, because they never were maintained, and there's no way to ever catch up. But if we take care of this school and we build it so that he can take his staff and handle what it needs to be handled, I just think we need to really listen to what he, you know, some of the maintenance things, like where to put equipment, where to put buffers, or if we need them, or, you know. Let him design that part of the school, because we don't, we don't know anything about it. I'm not an educator, I don't know how to educate, I don't know how to maintain, so it leaves me all, not athletics aware, am I?
I appreciate you saying that. Mr. Dalton, you have anything you wanna add while we come into that part? Come up to the microphone.
Because he's been a part of all the meetings that we've had.
Right.
Is it all? We just toppled that one. Yeah, like I, I just wanna reiterate, I've heard, and I've said this to all of you in passing, but the general consensus that I get from, I guess, administrators and different, different, different people is, oh, you're getting, we'll have a new building, then what do you do? What do you spend your money on? I just want everyone to keep in mind as we move forward, it's gonna cost more money and take more time to properly maintain this building than what we're doing now. Because what we're doing now at secondary level schools is just band-aiding, trying to make it to this point. Those buildings were pretty much lost decades ago. Because of the lack of maintenance, because of things that were just let go to they decay. It's gonna, it's gonna take a very good P E M program, preventive maintenance program. Because I've said many times, we cannot have a South Hill in our hands of a larger scale. Because we're still fighting that battle at South Hill Elementary School for ten, ten-plus years of nothing being done. I just wish, I want everyone to keep that in mind, because I think as we move forward, once we get into the meetings and we have the basic layout, you know, there's gonna be a discussion to be had on plumbing fixtures, floors, lighting, where lighting needs to go. So, you know, all that's to come after we get the basic floor plan down.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, have we talked about floor finishes?
We have talked about floor finishes as a side topic. We've never gotten, we've never come to the conclusion to talk about what we are gonna have. I know myself and Mr. Edwards have had some conversations about it. And basically, what we've discussed is mainly a terrazzo floor throughout the two main corridors in the cafeteria, and along with polished concretes on the classrooms and classroom always. Because looking at it over decades of how much you're gonna spend in wax and labor to do that, you know, that's what I'm trying to tell teachers now. That's where, that's where their money comes from for capital projects and to enhance your classroom, is by saving money in these areas.
Well, I think that that's playing out at Powhatan, they did do polished concrete there, they're very pleased with it. Especially since they had some existing floor, that they've actually married new floor to. And it's, it really turned out well to do it that way. Has there been some consideration to put the chemistry labs on the second floor as opposed to the first floor?
Yes.
Yes, I think the only thing we need is.
All the science labs are.
We just need exterior walls, because we don't wanna have to try to vet those, all your lab, all your science, chemistry labs, you only have woods.
Correct.
So you want them on exterior walls for any purposes.
Some of the middle school science labs will be downstairs, because again, they're looking to work in teams. But they're not expensive with all the gas and all the things like that.
So are, Mr. Dalton, are you satisfied with the amount of storage that you have for your equipment?
Not really, but like I said, after we get the basic layout. And depending, depending on what we decide as far as floors, it's gonna be very dependent on what we need as far as.
It could save us a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, it saves us a lot of money. I mean, we're looking at the, you know.
What's the purpose for terrazzo in the dining room?
It just looks, it looks a lot better, and being that we're gonna use that for activities at times, because both the stage areas are designed as media rooms. You know, and, you know, that's still up for, if it saves us money that we can put toward a field or toward that, or toward a second gym, I'm all for going polished concrete there. I mean, if it saves us a hundred thousand dollars in the long run, that's a hundred thousand dollars to be used in educational space. And I think that's what we all agree is the most important.
And you can ask any child in a high school what color his floor is in his cafeteria, and I get you, he can't take.
Unless it's brown tile.
Unless somebody put him out of it.
Institutional break.
I'm open for other questions from what we got from them. I'm gonna recommend, I think you all recommended that we come back again next week to talk about what updates from the, we might have had from the meetings or from the architects as they've come in to work with us on things. The architects want to make a presentation on the Thursday evening before we have our Monday night board meeting to address the finals as they understand them for your consideration. And so that's their recommendation, and I think we need to go with that, that'll be two weeks from now. So I think that's what, unless you tell me differently, that's what I'll plan for.
Go ahead.
The design of the media center, Mr. Nichols? Initially, there was a wall between the middle school section and the high school section.
It's a, it's a wall that can be moved open or closed.
So it's temporary, yeah?
Yes.
Just making sure, that was.
That's one of the questions that comes up. We have, so that it can be dropped down to keep them completely separate, or if we need to, it can be.
So we will meet with the architects the Thursday before our meeting on that Monday. And are we gonna, you're aiming to vote on these in our December meeting? To put the, to go ahead with.
The, just to give them the understanding that we are in the basic outline. That doesn't mean that every classroom is going to have the basic outline, so that they've gotta have that to begin putting in the heating, air conditioning, electrical, all the airflow, those types of things in place.
Okay.
We need to move, if we don't, we're not gonna bid this thing and have it back by June, and we're not gonna start it. That's gonna put us into another year.
Right.
You know, we need to go.
I think we've made a lot of progress though, right now, by saying we know what we think we are needing, but we're gonna set it up so that we can ask for it and then see how that comes back and begin working with it, as we talked about tonight.
And I'll go back and agree with Mr. Edwards. This thing's gonna be up long after I'm dead and gone, because again, we do things for the long haul in MacLemore Academy. So we got to make sure we get it right.
Right, I just had a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
One question in the world. So this next meeting that we had, we perhaps will have an idea of whether we're going with singletons or four by fours? Because a lot of things depends on it.
No, sir, I don't think for December we will be looking to make that decision. I think we'll still be looking at that through the spring. Ten years from now, when I'm still in the school, or if I'm probably gonna go to Seven Block, San Diego. And I don't think that, I don't think that the scheduling piece is gonna have an impact on how the overall layout of the building is.
No, not the overall layout, but I was just thinking, we were talking about lockers again and going back to that.
again and going back to that. That does have an effect on. Now, if we're gonna give notebooks or some type of, to all students, which some schools are doing that, what they're doing, they're doing it by grade this year, they have, you know, two grades, next year they have two more grades, and they're working to have everyone to have something that they can keep and carry home or keep in the classroom. And now, that would eliminate a whole bunch of problems as far as having books.
We, we currently have sufficient number of middle school and high school of chrome books for every student to have one to take home.
Well, then, that will eliminate some of the problem of saying whether or not we definitely need lockers or not, because if you have that, uh, that's what schools are going to need.
We're looking at ebooks, looking at Searcy Triangles ebooks, textbooks.
And, Miss, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Chairman, also, uh, Mr. Nichols, we, if we could, maybe on that Thursday, if we could have a physical paper copy of these papers, please to make sure all the board members have those for that meeting.
Uh, we wanna have that, we just haven't been able to get the paper ready and find it printed out. We have the printer to do it, we just don't have the paper.
All right? Then, uh, just the last couple of things, I have a, something I wanted you to take with you about the meetings for next year, we need to move a couple of little things. I just wrote some suggestions on it. We don't have to vote on that until the December meeting, but it's something for you all to think about. And the other thing to think about, we don't need to decide on this tonight or even in December probably, is if we want to document the pro, I had somebody approach me about video and aerial footage of the progress of the build, of the, and whether we want something like that done, where they take aerial photographs on every stage throughout the whole process of building the complex and whether we want it something like that.
We have a drone, I think we'll be able to do that ourselves.
That's fine, this is somebody.
I think we'll wanna do that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is that it for everybody?
Do we have a next meeting?
Well, we, I'm suggesting next week, I don't know what night would be best for you all next week. I know it works better for Ms. Garner and have it early.
Well, if it's an open meeting, she might be the only three-year-old that knows about architect.
But, but, but we, we're gonna have time to get some of these things done, be able to report back to you then.
Well, when we can do it five, and you know, the last one, we're not too bad.
Next Thursday is a, uh, Conference of Plan meeting. Yeah, next, on the sixth.
That's right.
December is a Conference of Plan meeting.
So, we would have this meeting probably at six.
So, Thursday at six P. M.?
I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying that's what's happening next Thursday.
Just go ahead and pick one.
Why can't we do it on Monday in case we came along, or probably we'll come back and do another one before we meet with the architects? I say Monday, you know what I'm saying? In case we need an extra, we will have to filter in.
The woman, they're meeting new by the day.
A lot different than what had been done, lots of report on Monday.
I thought the architects are gonna be here on Monday.
They will be, but I think they'll be getting information, new information, too. They'll be meeting with the science and with the nurses and with some others to get information, take back and draw into it, and I don't think there'll be a lot to report by Monday night.
I, I will put the one out, whatever you want to do. So, we'll leave that up, you're gonna send something out?
Or, or we can, or we can just plan to meet the following week on Monday night, having had a week to get things done. On the tenth.
And then we meet that Thursday with the architects.
We would meet again that Thursday.
Thursday, the.
Monday, the tenth.
Monday, the tenth, what'd you say about Thursday?
That's when the architects will come in and go over everything they've done.
On the thirteenth?
Yes.
So, we're gonna do Monday, the tenth at five P. M.? All right, so Monday, the tenth at five.
All along, try that.
Great. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you for all the favor. Thank you for coming tonight.